Or to order, I'm sorry. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Abbott.
Here.
Commissioner Jacks.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Here.
Commissioner Powers.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Chairman Gordon.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
At this time, we'll listen to an automated announcement.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. The items with a recommendation made by the Commission today will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, July 1st, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any continued items. First of all, today, I'd like to introduce our newest commissioner to join the Commission from District 2, Mr. William Gregg-Powers. Welcome. Glad to have you. First item today is the meeting minutes from May 22nd. Do I have a motion?
Motion that the May 22nd through 2019 minutes be approved?
Second motion.
A motion by Commissioner Jacks, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our call to the public. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Commission on any items, please come to the microphone. If you've signed up for one of the agenda items today, we'll call you up when we get to that agenda item, but if anyone has anything else to say, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to our public hearings. Item number one.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 40549074 from an RE 10A residential recreation, ten-acre minimum lot size zone to an RE residential recreation zone to bring the parcel into compliance in the Moccasin vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant for this item present? Would you like to address the Commission? Only if there's questions?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any comments, questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Morse.
Yeah, I was looking at this request, and there are several other one-acre parcels in the area that don't have the same zoning. I was just gonna ask staff if those need to be rezoned also. And I didn't see a parcel plat filed for any of these minor land divisions. Was that...did I miss something?
Chairman Gordon, Commissioner Morris, you're correct. There have been a lot of splits up in this vicinity that were done without a parcel plat, without rezones. This is one that they are applying for building permits on and are placing a home on it, and so they need to get it into compliance to be able to continue on with their permit process. We have been in contact with a few of the property owners in that area that are looking to fix some of those other parcels that have not...that do not have the correct zoning. We also are in contact with Supervisor Watson that is also looking to maybe hopefully fix that, and we've been meeting and are hopefully coming up with a plan to get those in compliance.
How about the requirement to, you know, require a parcel plat with the approval of zoning, just so it's memorialized?
Right. I don't know if we would be able to do that. Chris might be able to speak more towards that, but I think what the goal that we were looking to do was just to get them currently into compliance, and then any future splits would have to go through the parcel plat process. But as far as what's there, it might be difficult to retroactively go back and make them do the parcel plat, but I'll turn it to Chris if she has anything.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Morris, and members of the Commission, this is a lot, and there are lots of these types of lots, and they've actually been in existence for some time. And I don't know if they were created by a record of ser...well, they can't be created. I don't know if they're memorialized by a record of survey or not. They were probably created via deed, and typically, the department has not made the person rezoning obtain or go through the parcel plat process when that lot's been in existence for some time. I think one of our fears is we avoid two documents out there that may not agree where the lines are.
Chris, the only reason I said that was that, you know, I did look at the assessor's information, and the sale date was in 2018 on that lot, and it didn't appear to exist before that, so.
I'm not...you know, my impression was...my understanding was, because we are looking at all these lots, as Scott said, and my impression is it's been there for a while. Definitely the ones that are...I think there's a group of four to the east, they've been in existence for quite some time. In talking to some of the people who live in this area, they were under the impression that their zoning was AR. And, you know, we've...as I said, we've met with them, we've been able to show them that their impression was wrong, and we are working with them to...
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Walker to approve this item. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two.
Item number two is an...2A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan from GC General Commercial and MDR Medium Density Residential Land Use Designations to GC General Commercial Land Use Designation for Assessor Parcel Numbers 40222, 202, and 4022223 in the Scenic vicinity. The applicant's requesting this amendment to allow for a commercial indoor storage, an outdoor RV, and boat storage. We received one letter, as of right now, in opposition. Staff is recommending approval with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present on this item? Would you like to address the Commission?
If you have questions.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple of people signed up to speak on this item. We'll go through these first. Christina Potter, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Christina Potter. I'm with ERA Brokers Consolidated. Pardon this, this is a little nerve-wracking. I grew up in Mesquite. The scenic area's been tiny. It's growing. There's a subdivision...not a subdivision, there's homes being built right behind this, half-million-dollar homes. That was not noted in this request for this change. There is a whole neighborhood being built all around this. There's homes already that's been there. There's people that live in this area. There is plenty of land out in Scenic to commercial that's already there, that's already for sale, that's affordable. There's no reason to rezone this, where there's people that have their homes right in the area. I see this as a...changing this zoning would be a huge mistake. The county had it correct when they had it zoned for residential. And seeing the people requesting this, not notifying anybody of the homes that are in the area is wrong. I do have paperwork...I did not bring seventeen copies, but I do have paperwork that shows the growth in this little filled area. The growth in Scenic is huge right now. People can't afford to live in Mesquite, they can't afford to live in St. George, everything's growing, so people are building their homes out in Scenic. It's a beautiful area.
Do you have something you are wanting to show us?
I do. I only have one...I don't have seventeen copies.
Is it possible, yeah, Tim, to put that...yeah.
So...and it's upside down. Let me turn that. So this is a market report. This is a current market report for last month that shows the growth in the area, that shows the median house price. This is something that people aren't aware of in this area. This shows a current year of single-family homes that have been listed for us. We had fifty-one this last year. If you go back to...the previous year was only at thirty-one. I've got a commercial property for sale that shows it has a well, it has septic, it has everything that's needed, and it's affordable. It's a hundred and fifty thousand listed. Why not use that? It's on the main road. It's right across from the fire station. It's a great location, it's zoned commercial. Why not use what's there that's already zoned? And this is last year's, a year ago, a month and a year ago, for what was going on in this area, and it's gone up. The median house price has gone up. The amount that's being built out there has gone up. If you look at the permits that are being polled in this area for homes, it's gone up dramatically, and it's heartbreaking to see people request something when there's homes in the area and not let you know that there's homes in the area because they want this, when there's other properties that they can utilize that are on the main road, that are zoned commercial. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you.
Can you give her a copy of this?
Yeah, can she leave a copy with...yeah, if you would, please bring it to Ms. Chapman. Thank you, Christina. Dan Newbell, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Dan Newbell. I live in Mesquite, 575 Duchess Lane, and I work for Mountain Mission LLC, and we buy and sell properties, and some of which are out in this area. And I do have letters from some of the homeowners out there that are against this rezoning. Then I'll turn it to you. And I agree with Christina that...you know, especially where...I don't think the application was true to rezone this, where it didn't identify that this is a very positive growth area for residential living, and it shouldn't be redirected. You know, if they were gonna do this, it should've been done ten or fifteen years ago, you know, before this area grew like it is in the direction it's going. And a lot of these people that have purchased property out there have bought it on the grounds that it's a serene and beautiful area, you know, not an RV park.
Okay. Thank you. Did you say you have some additional letters there?
Yes.
Are they different than what have been submitted?
Yeah, also a petition here that's been signed by other homeowners out there.
Okay. If you would, please bring those up too. Thank you, Dan. Kelly Burgess?
Yeah, my apologies, I'm actually here to speak on number five, not number two.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. All right, so we have a few additional letters and a petition apparently that were turned in. I'll open this up, first of all, for discussion here amongst the Commission. Questions? Commissioner Neal?
I have a question for both of the speakers, either one, probably that the real estate would be most appropriate. What age would you say that the homes are out there?
Yeah, please come back to the podium. Thank you.
The homes directly behind this that's being requested to be rezoned are brand-new homes.
And about what size?
Over two thousand... Over two thousand square feet. They are. I mean, we're a retirement community. We've got people that do love their RVs, that want them right there, that want a bigger home, that want a bigger...you can't get an acre lot in Mesquite. You can't get an acre lot in other locations. People are moving there like crazy, because there's just nothing else available that's affordable. And then there are people in the community that's lived there for a long time. You do have people that have a little tiny home in the area that's perfectly content with that, that's not building, that's not changing.
That there's track that you're talking about, curbs, gutters, asphalt roads, underground, overhead?
No, no, you're looking out there...we don't have a lot of curbs and gutters. People move out there for the natural beauty of stuff. A lot of people don't even put fences up. They don't want fences, they don't want anything. They want just something pretty out where they can see the mountains that has acreage.
Peace and quiet?
Peace and quiet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abbott?
Yes, I just have a question for staff. According to the information we have here, this is zoned from...they want to change it from GC General Commercial and MDR Medium Residential to GC Commercial. Can you explain to the people that are here and to me exactly why you approve this and what the changes are going to be from what they already are?
Chairman Gordon, Commissioner Abbott, yes, if you...so this item before you right now is an amendment to the general plan.
Right.
And the area plan for this area. The following item is the rezone portion. Right now, and I don't know if it's possible, Chris, could we go to the map that shows the general and area...current general and area plan? So if you look on the map, the general plan and the area plan currently designate this corridor along the Scenic as general or neighborhood commercial. There are a few general commercial portions that have been changed there. The neighborhood commercial would probably allow for the indoor storage portion of what they're proposing, but they also are proposing for some outdoor storage of boats and RVs. Therefore, we need to require a seat...I think we're going to an SD zone for commercial and allowing specifically that it would allow for the outdoor storage of boats and RVs. That would require the general commercial land designation for our general and area plans, and that's why we are going to those designations. But if you see that along the Scenic route, it's already neighborhood commercial, the portion of their property extends into the medium density residential, but when they would come in for a site plan to construct this, we would require that they combine their parcels in order to complete this. But that's...yeah, so Commissioner Abbott, yeah, the property currently has a land designation of neighborhood commercial on half of it, and they're proposing to expand that to the eastern portion of their property, and then also, we're going to general commercial, so it would allow for the outdoor storage of boats and RVs.
Okay, what was necessary to notify the homeowners with this request?
Commissioner Abbott, we are required to notify everybody within three hundred feet of the subject property itself.
And how many were there within that?
That is a good question. I'm not sure that I'd have that information with us right now, but we did notify all three hundred of those...or all individuals within...or property owners within those three hundred feet, plus we also posted physically the site itself.
Did you have objections from any of those?
So we did receive the one objection letter in the mail, and I believe it wasn't within the three hundred-foot radius. The ones that were just presented to you currently, we would have to go back and check to see if any of those were within the three hundred-foot radius.
Thank you.
Yeah, one second, Roger. Follow-up to Commissioner Abbott's question, the...I guess what led staff to the recommendation for approval, considering it does...there's obviously a clear pattern in the area plan as to what the intent was, and this one parcel sticks two parcels to the east into medium density residential. Can you explain to us, I guess, where the support comes from on staff's standpoint?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, you're correct. The current land designation for the Scenic route is the neighborhood commercial, and we feel that they're gonna be conjoining the properties, and because they're right next to each other, then we would support the continuation of that neighborhood or the general commercial into that medium-density residential portion of it.
Because it's one project.
It's gonna be one project.
One parcel fronting the main road. Okay.
Just on a side note as well, when they go through the site plan application and review process, one of the requirements would be that they would have to provide a view of securing fence or device separating the residential portion or adjacent residential properties to this commercial property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jacks?
Thank you. For staff as well, and I think you partially answered it right now, being still rather new to the Commission, so general commercial, and then you have...and then you added medium-density residential, those two together, what's the restrictions on the medium-density residential that affects the general commercial? I'm trying to understand what that does.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jacks, if I understand you correctly, right now, the application is to amend the general and area plan for this area from neighborhood commercial and medium-density residential, because both of their parcels are located...one's located half in the neighborhood commercial, half in the medium-density residential, and then the other parcels completely in the medium-density residential. And so the item that you see before you right now is to change that completely to general commercial.
Right, and so the...when you have medium-density residential, what restrictions does that put on them that doesn't work for them right now?
Okay, so yeah, the medium-density residential would not allow for the commercial use of the storage units or the outdoor storage itself. The medium-density residential is for single-family residential uses, and that's...and that would be it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Morse?
Yeah, I just have some observations. We kind of ran into a similar situation here not too long ago. The general and area plan are both accurately represented by the exhibit in there, I take it. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Morse, you are correct.
Okay. In my experience, you know, there's a lot of...a lot of time and effort spent on developing not only the general plan, but even more, the area plan, the specific plan for that area. And if they're in conformance with each other, it means that everybody's done their job and that they, you know...and people take a look at those, at least knowledgeable people take a look at those and determine whether they're gonna invest in property, gonna build something, whatnot, and they have some sort of degree of anticipation or relying on that information. We're asking to change a fair amount of that medium-density to a general commercial outside of the boundaries of both the specific and the general plan. In my opinion, that does a disservice to the people that are in the area that could have relied on that information. Even if they'd known it was there, they could've relied on it. I'll end my silique.
That's okay, thank you. Other comments by the Commission or questions for staff? Yeah, I'll just say, it's kind of a hard one. To me, it seems like kind of a reach to extend that far back into the medium-density residential. Looking ahead, and I know we'll get to this item, but at the zoning map, there's only...appears to be only two parcels that are even zoned commercial, the rest is AR still, and the subject property has one larger parcel that I can see why is bigger than the actual general plan area.
one larger parcel that I can see why is bigger than the actual general plan area. I could see how asking for that entire parcel to be part of general commercial would be a reasonable request, but to then also include one more parcel further into medium density residential appears to be quite a bit of a, a reach there. Yes, Commissioner Mill?
Part, part of the response to, to Mr. Morris, for your zoning and that would be part of your due diligence when you buy a property. If you, if you rely strictly on the word of a realtor, good luck.
Other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we deny the request for general plan amendment.
Aye, sir.
I have a, a motion for denial by Commissioner Morris, a second by Commissioner Mill. Any other discussion on this topic before we vote? Seeing none, those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion has been denied. Item 2B?
Item 2B is an evaluation of requests for a rezone of assessor parcel numbers 402-2202, or 402-22202, and 402-22203, from AR, from an AR agricultural residential zone to an SDC special development commercial zone to allow for commercial indoor storage with outdoor RV and boat storage in the scenic vicinity. We received the same letter of opposition on this item as well.
We have the same speakers, I believe, signed up to speak. I don't know if it's relevant considering the action on the last item.
I have a question for staff.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Abbott.
Since we recommended a denial on 2A, should we be voting on 2B?
We still have to go through the motion to, really can't approve a zone change without the general plan, but we have to go through the motion to deny.
But we couldn't approve 2B after denying 2A, could we, if I understand this right?
We cannot, but we still have to go through the motion of denying it, because it is a agendized item. So, it, it-
It is just part of the process.
It's part of the process. And we did have speakers signed up for it. Christina or Dan, you're welcome to come back if you have anything else to say on item 2B. If not, if there's any questions or comments, other than that, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I make a motion that would be checked.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mill to deny item 2B, and a, a second by Commissioner Morris. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is denied. Item number three.
Item 3A is an evaluation of a request for amendment to the Mojave County general plan and amendment to the Virgin River community's area plan from an NC neighborhood commercial land use designation to a G C general commercial land use designation for assessor parcel numbers, number 402-77001H in the scenic vicinity. The applicant is requesting this amendment to allow for a rezone to CMO that would allow for warehousing and outdoor storage. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. I believe the applicant is on the phone. Do you have anything to, you'd wish to speak on this item?
Uh, no. Hi, my name's Brandon Cook. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I'll open it up for any comments or questions. And if none, I'll entertain a motion. Yeah, Commissioner Jax?
I'm, thank you. I'm assuming that when you look at the properties right next to it, it's already has that sort of purpose next door, as far as, I mean, it looks like it is compatible.
Yeah, Scott, do you want to explain the surrounding land uses that are there today? And the zoning that's there, or the general plan designations that are around the parcel today?
Mr. Chairman, aye, yes. So, currently, the, the properties to the west of this parcel are zoned C2H, which is our highway commercial. That one does allow for the indoor storage facility. The, it appears that they are storing vehicles outdoors on the, the parcel to the south, if you look on, on your map there.
Yes.
That would not be in compliance with our, our current, with that current zoning. The, the prop, subject property that is before you today is applying for a plan amendment to our general commercial land use designation and our general and area plans, but then the zoning, we were looking, in the next item, it, it would need to go to our CMO zoning, which is our commercial manufacturing, open lot storage, which would allow for the open lot storage. Now, the property that's, that's to the west that has the open lot storage to come into compliance, they would need to go through a rezone process as well. Currently, the county is a complaint-driven county, and so if we receive a complaint on that, on that property, we would send them a violation, and then they would need to come into compliance with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, that area, like the lady said there, really is growing, but with that growth, I see a need for this kind of thing also. So, what I see of this recommendation, I'd make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second by Commissioner Jax. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3B?
Item 3B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor parcel number 402-77001H from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone, to allow for warehousing and outdoor storage in the scenic vicinity. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Discussion on this. First of all, applicant that is on the phone, anything you wish to say on this item?
Uh, no, I'm just happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions on this item? Or a motion?
Make a motion that be approved per staff request.
Second a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jax, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four.
Item 4A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County general plan and an amendment to the Virgin River community's area plan from an LI, light industrial land use designation to an SR suburban residential land use designation for assessors parcels numbers 402-20035 and 402-20036 in the scenic vicinity. The applicant is requesting this amendment to rezone to RE2A that would bring the property into compliance. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you like to address the commission?
I have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, comments on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Powers. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Item 4B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 402-20035 and 402-20036 from an RE10A residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an RE2A residential recreation 2-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the scenic vicinity. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Applicants, same thing, any? Commissioners, any comments, questions, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Morris. Any comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Item number five is, is an evaluation of a request for a rezone-
Has left the conference.
-of assessor parcel number 22909041 from an ROA, single, uh, single-family residential manufactured home, homes prohibited, limited animal privileges zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for an accessory structure to be built prior to a residence in the Fort Mojave vicinity. We've received several letters in opposition, we've received eight letters in opposition. I believe you, you have those in front of you. We received one this morning as well, and hopefully you received that one. The properties, or the ones that we have received by letter, we've counted that were in, within that 300-foot radius, and it does add up to 28% of the property owners within the 300-foot radius are opposed, and they equal 32% of the area, which triggers the requirement for the board of supervisors to have a four-fifths vote. So, four out of the five would have to approve it to, for it to move forward. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you, Scott. Is the applicant present for this item? Would you like to address the commission? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Delmar Sanders. I live at 4392 Donald Place, Fort Mojave. I've lived there since 2000. My wife is president of the HOA. I am, she's also employed as a, retired as a postmaster. I am head of the architect committee, retired. I was a service representative for a natural gas company. The reason that we are asking for this is, as you know, it is a, for farm animals, not reg, no farm animals, no manufactured homes. The reason for our request is that we would like to build a garage before we build a home. As it starts at ROA, it says that we have to have a residence, a home, before we can build a garage. The reason for us to do this, to change it from we can build a garage and then the home, is that my wife diagnosed with cancer, and she doesn't want to leave our residence until the treatment is done, which will be in several years. We are too old to have farm animals as far as a manufactured home. We have also purchased a, plans to build a stick house there, a house that my wife has dreamed about. And that's all I have to say. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Mill?
You said you live out of Donald Place?
Correct.
Um, that area does have an HOA. The area you want to build in, does it have an HOA?
No.
Okay, so what does that have to do with, with the, the property you're trying to build on?
It has nothing to do, I was just stating. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Scott, one question before I get to the speaker, people that sign up to speak. How common is it to do this sort of zone change to allow an accessory structure before a primary?
Mr. Chairman, the, we've allowed, there are several properties out there that are, are zoned AR, and a lot of people come in and want to build a, a garage or something before they come in and, and put on a primary residence. We, we weren't necessarily looking at that for our decision. What we are looking at is the surrounding properties. If you look directly to the east, everything is zoned AR as well. And so, we didn't have any issues with having the, the zone changed back, or changed to an AR zone as well. The current zone, it would, it essentially would almost be the same zoning, because the ROA allows for the same agricultural and a few farm animals as well. All that would really be changing would be allowing for them to build their, their garage before the, the home, as well as it does allow for manufactured homes. And so, that's, those are the real big changes, but because there are other AR properties directly in the vicinity, we were okay with it.
Yeah, I see everything to the east is AR. Thank you. We do have a number of people signed up to speak, so we'll go through these. Kelly Burgess, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name's Kelly Burgess. I live at 2189 Roberts Way. It's just around the corner. I never measured the 300-foot distance from that property to mine, but it's probably pretty darn close. Just have a couple of comments to make. Number one, I was one of the first homeowners to build in that subdivision where my home is, that runs along Nicholas Drive and then over to Roberts Way. And the reason I purchased that property was because it was larger than the lots in Sunset Ranchos, would be, would be improving the property values. And in that subdivision now, I would venture to say that in excess of 25% of those homes are, the subdivision where my home is, are over 3,000 square feet. So, to, to make a change, to change the zoning the way we would, has the potential to, to diminish the value of the property. Also, there's really no need to, to do a spot zoning change. There's lots of other properties out there that are zoned the way he intends to have this one zoned, changed, so there's no need to, to do that. And also, this property has been zoned the way it is zoned, or was zoned that way before he purchased the property, so it's not, it's not like he did not know that it was zoned the way it is as well. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Did you have a question for the speaker?
I have a question for staff real quick, and I may have a follow-up with the gentleman. Subject property, is it the same tract as, is it the same tract as the Sunset Ranchos?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill, yes, it is tract 4046. So, yes, it is in the Sunset Ranchos tract.
Question for the gentleman who just spoke. You had mentioned that residences out that way are 3,000 square foot plus. You had mentioned that residences out that way are 3,000 square foot plus.
That property is actually in Sunset Ranchos two. There are 13 lots in that subdivision. The biggest home is over 7,000 square feet.
Thank you. Rodney Burgess, please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the commission and staff. I am Rodney Burgess. I own the property directly across the street from the subject matter here, at 2305 Sundance. If they could bring that map back up on the screen, I'd like to explain a little bit of the surrounding for you. If you see the project where they're at, if you go down where that is marked ROA, a man is building a brand-new home there that appears to me like it's going to be between 3,000 and 4,000 square feet, beautiful home. Then you turn left on that corner, and that's where my son Kelly's home is on that corner, and that is a beautiful home. The one next to him is, all these are big, over 3,000-square-foot homes. Then if you go across the street where my house is at, mine's 3,600 square feet, the very next house is 7,500 square feet. Across the street are all stick-built beautiful homes. So I just didn't want you to be misled of the fact of the zoning around this. And the letters you've had in objection come from all of these neighbors that are concerned about the possibility of this being used to put mobile homes on, or to put a great big garage on that's going to distract from our neighborhood. And that's all we ask. If he wants to put a garage on there, he can put living quarters inside of it with the zoning that's there. He don't have to go for this zoning and take away from the fact of being able to put mobile homes in there. I have a problem with that. We have a letter that someone in staff, and this is another thing that bothers me, someone in staff went to one of the neighbors and had them sign a piece of paper which is a waiver for diminification of value of property over this item. And I'd like to put it up here so you guys can see it. I don't own this paper. I would give it to staff, but I would like you to see this. And I don't think staff should be going out.
Can you rotate, can you rotate that paper for us?
What, do I turn it? Which way do you want?
All the way around. There you go.
Keep going.
One more half-turn. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, I don't believe staff should be getting involved in these rezonings by having neighbors sign forms saying that they understand the property value is going to be diminished. We know that if you change that zoning so you can put mobile homes next to a nice stick-built house, you're going to diminish the value. So, I would recommend that you guys do what I know you will do is right, and decline this. We don't want a spot zoning in the middle of all these beautiful homes. We bought this property so we could build nice homes in a nice area. All good neighbors. It's a quiet neighborhood, and it's built for this reason, because we wanted the peace and quiet of stick-built neighborhood, not mobile homes. And if he wants to put a garage somewhere in an area with mobile homes, go do that. There's a lot of property for sale in the valley. He could build a garage here. I'm sure he can go talk to staff. He could build a garage and have living quarters inside of it. That's done everywhere. But I don't believe we want to, I don't believe we want to have a rezone here where people after him can come in and put four mobile homes on that piece of property. It's separated with a wash in the middle. So part of the property is across the wash, part of the property is up on the hill, right across the street from me. I have no problem with him building a garage, but not giving him the zoning to make it adequate for putting mobile homes or other things in it. Live with the zoning he knew was there when he bought it. I talked to this man when he first bought it, and he told me he wanted to put a garage in it, and he was going to build a nice home. I got no problem with that. But please don't rezone this so that someone can come in in the future and put mobile homes in there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the overview of the neighborhood. Just to be clear, though, this would not be spot zoning. Technically, the parcel immediately adjacent to the east is zoned AR, along with pretty much everything on that block to the east. But certainly understand, and again, appreciate the clarification on the types of homes that have been built, but they have, some of those have been built in AR zoning, just for clarification. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Mill?
You had mentioned about all of the adjoining properties are rather large homes. That the square, the footages you were quoting, is that livable area, or is that gross under roof?
Livable area. I wish you would come and look at our neighborhood.
I'm out there probably two, three, four times a month.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Gordon?
Yes.
If I may, I would just like to address the form that was presented to the commission. That form is part of an application. Only the applicant is required to sign that as part of his application. It's the Prop 207 waiver, which basically an applicant signs that stating that if the rezoning that they're requesting causes any any decrease, thank you, decrease in value to the property, they will not hold the county liable. So staff does not go around to adjacent property owners, having them sign petitions or anything like that.
I understand. Appreciate that clarification. Hopefully that clarifies that for the public. Yolanda Kooch? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Yolanda Castro Kooch. I live at 4121 Nicholas Drive. I live catty-corner from the property that we're talking about. I retired in 2005, been there all these years. When I moved in across the street, all those nice expensive homes weren't there. They built after I moved in. Needless to say, that's a plus on me. I don't know exactly, understand all that's going on. All I know is that I was told by Sarah, I've heard, I've heard five stories, I've heard one, that they want to rezonate so they could put mobiles on there. I don't want, if I'm over 55, and when I want to live in a mobile park, I will, but I don't want to have to worry, I'm widowed, I don't want to have to worry about them renting out those places all the time. As Mr. Burgess said, on the other side of the wash, the young man is building a beautiful home, which is only going to add to the value. I live in one of those nice little stick houses that have been there 26 years. And I don't want to have to worry about rental property, mobile homes across the street, in and out all the time. So I would appreciate if you respect my safety and the safety of my neighborhood, because we are a very tight-knit group. We pay attention, we watch. Someone's garage doors open, whatever, we pay attention. And I just don't want mobile homes across the street. Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Walter Edwards? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Walter Edwards. I live at 2308 Sundance Drive, Fort Mojave. I'm two houses up from the subject property, and I would like to voice my disapproval of a zone change which would allow a structure
It's okay. Go ahead.
to be built prior to the residence. That, to me, just opens the door to whatever, because I don't know that there's a time limit given on that. If it's approved, 20 years down the road, we're still looking at this storied shed with whatever is stored in it and around it. And we've already got one of the neighbors that kind of has got more than he needs to store, I think. But other than that, the houses in the area are as good as you see anywhere in Fort Mojave. I have one more exception. Up the road, there was a steel building built, probably 30 by 60, proposed for storage, as I understand. Within six months, that became a full-fledged operating boat repair shop, seven days a week. And this kind of thing bothers me that there's an opportunity for something like that to happen here with building a storied shed with storied buildings, whatever you want to call it, and then it turning into something else. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you. Kyle Gary? Garni? No Kyle Garni. Bernie?
Etchabarren.
Etchabarren, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Bernie Etchabarren. I have the home at 2098 East Sundance. First, I'd like to apologize for Mr. Sanders' situation, but that does, you know, come to mind that if this is changed, should his circumstance change, now it's changing, you know, as Mr. Burgess said, somebody come in and put mobile homes in, or trailers, whatever. There's no limitation there. The outskirts of this, of this neighborhood is, you know, that kind of buttons it up. And there is a, there was mention of the zoning aside of those lots that are AR. And I don't know if those homeowners are here, and I apologize in advance, but it looks like AR zoning. And, you know, if I want to live in that kind of neighborhood, I'll go to Rotary Park, and I don't, it's unsightful, and I am emphatically opposed to this rezoning. So, and when that letter, that note is signed for the diminishment of the value, that doesn't just affect that lot. It affects everything around it. And I'm, this is my retirement home, and I don't want to look at a big building. I see that building from my house that this gentleman's referring to, and, you know, I'd much rather see the mountains, but I do see that big building, and I'm a little bit away from it. So, again, I emphatically oppose to this, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The last form I had filled out was Delmar Sanders, who is the applicant. Did you want to say anything more at this time? Alright, we are at, I will open it up here to the commission for comments, questions of staff on this item. Yes, Commissioner Mill?
I have a question for staff. Is there, there seems to be a lot of talk about manufactured homes. Could zoning be changed so it's where it could be stick-built only?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill? Currently, the zoning right now is single-family residential manufactured homes prohibited, but it does not allow for the building of a garage before your primary residence. Is your question whether or not we could condition it so that it's only, it's the AR zone, and then they can't have a manufactured home? Is that your question? I'm going to refer to that to our attorney, Bob, so I'll be able to answer that.
Commissioner Mill, yes, you can impose a condition. You know, if you do recommend agricultural residential, you can condition, recommend a further condition that manufactured homes not be allowed.
Question two, it seems like the mayor, maybe I'm reading this wrong, how did what we're doing here get involved with planning and zoning? That with planning? I wasn't aware that a, that a garage being built first is against the court rules for planning and zoning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill? In our zoning ordinance, we only have two zones that allow for a garage to be built before a primary residence, and that is our AR zone and the RE zone are the only two zones that you can build an accessory structure prior to building a primary residence. All the other residential zones require a primary residence before you put any accessory structures on them. That's in our zoning ordinance.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could the applicant come to you with any kind of a request and get permission to put up this garage as it is now, with no zoning changes?
No. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, no. They couldn't build the structure, the accessory structure, without a primary residence first being on there with the current zoning.
I thought that was the answer.
Yes. Commissioner Jax?
Question on staff. So as areas develop, and when I look at the pictures here, and you see the residential neighborhoods expanding and developing, historically, what happens in planning and zoning as far as changing areas from one criteria to another? Because it just seems like an interesting situation where you have a bunch of ARs that are already there, as we've mentioned, and ROAs, there's a bunch of those. But yet, you've got this neighborhood that's expanding that direction. Do you take a look at that as a staff, or how's that work?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Jax? Really what we're looking at when we get the application in for this rezone is we're looking at the surrounding properties. We'll take a look at our general plan and area plan first to make sure that it meets, that it's in compliance with our general and area plan, which it would still be in compliance with our general and area plan. Then we look for the surrounding uses and surrounding zoning that's in the vicinity. So in this instance, we look to the east, and you can see that everything to the east is currently zoned AR. And so it would not be considered spot zoning where we're just taking one zone and then putting a different zone in the middle of it. It would still be inconsistent with, or still would be consistent with the surrounding land uses and zoning in the vicinity. And that's really what we're looking for as we make our decision on these items.
Okay. So if anything else is going to happen, it would be a change to the general plan or one of the plans? I mean, if you're going to change a whole area?
Correct. If it was going to be a major change to the area, yeah, you would need to do some type of general and area plan amendments. Those are going to be a little bit difficult right now because of Prop 207, we're not able to necessarily just go in and change everybody's zoning without their permission, essentially.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Mill?
Question for applicant. Did you by some chance check with county, the planning and zoning in the Bullhead City?
Delmar Sanders? Yes, I did. I went over to Hancock and asked them, and she told me then it was zoned residential. She did not tell me that it was ROA. And so we went and purchased the land, and then when I went back to get the building permit for the garage, then we run into this ROA and that we had to build a residence, a home, before we could build the garage. She said we could, we didn't say that we had to build a residence before we could build the garage. And that's when we decided that we needed to build the garage first. And that's why I put in the request.
When you purchased the property, did you buy it from the, excuse me, I'm trying to dodge a bullet here. Did you buy it directly from the owner of the property, or was there a middle person?
We bought it from the owner.
Oh, okay. Were you advised of your own due diligence at that time?
No.
Sir, I know you wanted to speak again. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I believe you wanted to speak to the commission again.
We are not planning on buying, building a mobile home there. We want to build a stick home. Like I stated in my earlier, that we are planning on building a 2,200-square-foot house that we already have purchased the plans for. We just hit a flaw with house that we already have purchased the plans for. We just hit a flaw with my wife's medical problems, and that's why. And we had purchased a mobile, a motorhome and a boat. And it's going to be a while before we need to store it. That's all it amounts to. On the thing of living in it, I am even going to put any utilities in this garage. The builder said that I had to have electricity, so, to operate the doors. So I am going to have to run electricity. But I'm not running a sewer to it, I'm not running any water to it. I'm just using it for storing for our boat and trailer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Certainly appreciate your situation and what you're trying to do. On the other side, obviously, if we go to AR, it does, if, if that plan does not follow through, it does open up other options for a potential future owner or other development. So that's the question we have in front of us today. Other comments, questions by the commission?
The way I see this, Mr. Holter presented originally, the percentage that had objected to it, and what we've heard from those that are living there, I would recommend denying the request.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion, Commissioner Abbott?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott to deny the request for a rezone, and a second by Commissioner Powers. Any other discussion or questions on this item? Those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is denied. Item number six.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, one second. Commissioner Morris.
I need to declare conflict on this item.
Okay, thank you. Item number six.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 22716067A from an, from a C22A general commercial two-acre minimum lot size zone to a CMO commercial manufacturing open lot storage zone to allow for an automotive, marine, diesel, and off-road repair shop with sales, a sales showroom in the Fort Mojave vicinity. Staff is recommending approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present for this item? Would you like to address the commission? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Or a motion?
Make a motion that it be approved per staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jax, a second by Commissioner Powers. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number seven. Commissioner Morris.
Item seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor parcel number 20413111 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 7A agricultural residential seven-acre minimum lot size, and an AR 5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Kingman vicinity. The applicant is seeking to split the property into five parcels, as shown on Exhibit A. Two of the parcels located in the south of the parcel are proposed to be rezoned to the AR 7A agricultural residential seven-acre minimum lot size, with the other three parcels located to the north and westerly portion proposed to be rezoned to the AR 5 agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size. Staff recommends approval for the proposed rezone with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Kathy, would you like to address the commission? Thank you. Questions, comments by the commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendations.
Second a motion.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know there has to be legal access to all these pieces of property. Is there roads in there now? Dirt roads? I know that area pretty well. Is there dirt roads touching that, those parcels now? And if not, do you have any kind of requirement before this is approved, that there has to be at least roads that are travelable?
Shadow Mountain Road is an existing road that is travelable. I personally was on the road to put the postings out there. Additionally, the parcels that would be created in the site plan example, they're showing a proposed roadway to be added with the created parcels, so they all would have access.
But that's, those roads being added, I really am just asking for information right now. Those roads being added is not a requirement of us approving this.
Correct.
Thank you.
There is a, there are a couple of staff recommended conditions. Correct me if I'm wrong here, that each parcel shall have legal access, and that public easements granted for right-of-way, be dedicated on a parcel plat.
I know that they have to be dedicated.
Right.
But my question was, do they have to be?
Constructed first.
Constructed. And I think the answer's no, right?
They don't need to be constructed, but one of the standard conditions, it's number three, does require, as Commissioner Gordon noted, that legal access is provided.
Thank you.
It doesn't need to physically exist, but it needs to legally be there.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Yes, Commissioner Mill.
Going back, if something happened a month, six weeks ago, were they road being, as a part of the condition is a road being put in? Simple question. Is it going to be on the county's grading permit, or the schedule? Because they had a whole track that had been ignored for god knows how long.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill, is your, is your question whether or not the new easements that are, that the, if they're going to be on the county's road maintenance system? Is that what your question is? That would be up to our Public Works Department as far as, and whether or not they want to take those on. But they, that would, that would make, they would be the ones that would make that determination on whether or not it would be a, a road that they would like to maintain. And, or, but it's not required. Chris has more.
Mr. Chairman Gordon, Mr. Mill, the county can only accept roadways into their maintenance system that have been constructed according to the standard details for whatever type of road is being constructed. Furthermore, the only roadways the county is obligated to maintain are county highways, and those have been platted through some sort of plating process. And typically, roads that are, that are the result of a minor land division such as this, do not fit one or the other of those.
Does the county want to install this road?
No, sir. The county will not install the road. It would have to be installed by the property owner and the developer.
Is Mountain Shadow Road maintained by the county right now?
Mountain Shadow Road is maintained by the county up to seven tenths of a mile from this current site. So, most of it is, and then the remaining seven tenths is not maintained.
Understood. Thank you.
Another question, a ongoing question. So in order to get a road on the county list, it has to go through the Board of Supervisors?
Mr. Gordon, Mr. Mill, that's correct.
It has to be improved to certain specifications, and then requested to be taken on as, in the maintenance program, correct?
Okay, something for, to think about. County's going through a growing spurt, and we're adding roads all the time. But if they don't make the maintenance list, the spurt may stop, especially in the, up around the, the White Mountain, or, yeah, up, up towards Las Vegas. That's just something to think about.
Yeah, obviously, that's a policy decision by Board of Supervisors, if they want to improve roads to support growth. Traditionally, like was stated, the developer would bear the burden of, of full improvements and the requests are costly to get to that point.
I didn't mean to open up a can of worms. But the bottom line, 35 years ago, I said, why do we have all these dirt roads? Well, there's several reasons. One, the county owns only a certain portion of Mojave County compared to BLM railroads, so forth and so on. So they don't have the money to do it. So you have to put the road in, you have to petition to the supervisors to accept it. And if they accept it, then they do a certain amount of improvement. That's the way it is. And I, there's going to have to be a lot of changes before that's going to change, I would think.
Thank you, Commissioner Abbott.
Still going to be more dirt roads.
Yes. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. We already have the motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 33343044 from an RE 36A residential recreation 36-acre minimum lot size to an RE 10A residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size, and an RE 5A residential recreation five-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Valley Vista vicinity. The applicant is seeking to split the property into five parcels, as shown on Exhibit A. Four of the parcels are located in the south half of the parcel and are proposed to be rezoned to AR 5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size, with the other parcel located in the north half. And it is proposed to be rezoned to an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size. Staff recommends approval for the proposed rezone with standard conditions.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Kathy, any comments? Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for any comments or questions on this item.
For reasons we see here, there's five acres all around that property. So...
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any other comments?
No question on the roads.
We'll table that item for another day. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sorry, opposed? Motion carries. Believe that's all of our agenda today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll serve.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.